Good evening, everyone. I call this September 24th, 2024 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. We do have a quorum, but Commissioner Adrian Barbeau is running a few minutes late. She will join us shortly. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Steve Ross with a great Southwest track and field classic that we'll recognize later. So please join me in a moment of silence. If you'd come to the podium and lead us in the pledge, please. Please stand.
Yeah, please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Nice voice. Item three on our agenda is approval or changes to the agenda. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions? No changes. Commissioners, any changes requested? Seeing none, I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you. We move on to item four, Proclamations. Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to talk about the great Southwest track and field classic that we hold here in Albuquerque, New Mexico, in the heart of Burnley County. It's a subject I'm passionate about as a former cross-country track and field athlete at Sandia High School. Matadors.
Yay!
I'm just proud to see my sport represented here and all of our great athletes and all the wonderful people that represent the sport and all of our sports, really. You know, this is about the track and field classic, but, you know, athletics just can make such a huge positive impact on the lives of our youth. And we have so many great success stories here in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and we have so many great people making these things happen and supporting our youth. So wanted to express my appreciation, our appreciation, as the Board of Commissioners for Burnley County. So I'm going to go ahead and read this acknowledgement, and when I finish with the acknowledgement, or actually, while I read this, if you all want to come up to the podium, all of the athletes and the folks supporting them through the great Southwest track and field classic. We have with us tonight many representatives, but leading the way, we have Mr. Steve Ross, who helped us lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have three amazing athletes here with us tonight. We have Charlie Carruthers, we have Holly Andrews, we have Grace Ernly, and we have Frederick Ford. So we're really excited to have you guys with us tonight. I'm going to read this and then give you all a few moments to talk about what you do. Acknowledgement. The Burnley County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge the Great Southwest Track and Field Classic, acknowledging that the Great Southwest Track and Field Classic stands as one of the nation's premier postseason prep individuals showcasing elite high school athletes and offering a valuable platform for coaches and scouts to discover exceptional talent. And acknowledging that the Great Southwest Track and Field Classic is an Albuquerque-based nonprofit organization that is managed by a volunteer board, many of whom are before us, that include high school track coaches, officials, business owners, and community leaders. And acknowledging the Great Southwest Track and Field Classic brings over 600 of the nation's finest young athletes and their families to Albuquerque annually, including standout competitors from Burnley County and across New Mexico. And acknowledging that the event provides the opportunity for high school-age athletes to compete at a high level, showcasing their talents and engage in fellowship. And acknowledging the economic benefit that the Great Southwest Track and Field Classic brings to the county each year as it attracts thousands of visitors from across the United States. And acknowledging the vision of the Great Southwest Track and Field Classic to involve even more athletes by solidifying its place as one of the nation's premier competitions. As the event grows, so does the level of competition, giving athletes greater opportunities to achieve new personal bests. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes the Great Southwest Track and Field Classic for its pivotal role in shaping the athletic journeys of high school athletes across the United States, as well as the positive impact it has on our community. Done this 24th day of September 2024 in Burnley County, state of New Mexico, presented to you all by this Board of County Commissioners. If you'd like to say a few words.
I want to thank you guys for allowing us to be here today. And what we'd like to do, we'd like to have one of our athletes speak for behalf of us as a board and also as the athletes. So I'm going to introduce Frederick Ford from Albuquerque High.
Hello, hello. So my name's Frederick Ford, and I'm a local athlete here, born and raised in Albuquerque. And I go to Albuquerque High School. So I had a pretty long track run that I've been doing for the last three years, and I've been a very, very high-talented athlete in New Mexico. But I would like to first thank the coaches and everybody over here for helping this, like, be put on and everything. And just like, I can't state how much it has helped in my recruitment process and just in shaping me as an athlete. And it just warms my heart that volunteers would come out and actually put this together. So a real quick round of applause for them. But I really, through my track career, the Great Southwest is something that has helped me immensely. I have gotten, I've received three scholarship opportunities from three different Division One schools, all due to Great Southwest. I received one even in the indoor classic to UNM, which was a full-ride scholarship for a track, which is very rare, and it is just something that I'm so grateful for. And it gave me that opportunity. I'd like to also point out that the friends that I made along the way are friends who are collegiate athletes now, and I have made friends who have basically traversed all of track in the collegiate field. And I just, I can't say how much that it has helped me throughout my career. And so next, well, this upcoming year in the fall, I will be running for Oregon. Go Ducks, which is one of the most prestigious and recognized track programs in the nation. So let alone by my talents, it was through the Great Southwest that I was recognized as top 10 for different sports, or for different events in sport. And I went to Nike Nationals, which is another big national meet, and I qualify for those through Great Southwest. So it's just an amazing opportunity, and I am forever grateful for it. And so, yeah, you guys should be too, and help it, help it stay a very, very meaningful thing for the state and everybody in it. Thank you.
I want to take a point of personal privilege and thank you all. I used to be, long ago, a Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Albuquerque. We managed that indoor track at the convention center. This is awesome. I ran track at West Mesa High School a lot longer ago than when he ran or you, but it is a life-changing experience. It teaches kids how to endure, how to get along with their teammates, how to succeed. So thank you so much, all of you, for what you do with this. And thank you, Commissioner Olivas.
Come on up, and we'd like to give you this acknowledgement, and let's all take a picture.
Congratulations, go Ducks.
Congratulations to you. Well said, young man.
Good job.
Thank you.
We need a little bit wider on this side, and hopefully that looks pretty good. A little bit more over here so that we're not, we're all in the center. All right. I'm going to take a bunch, so just keep on smiling. Thank you, and one with another camera. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you. We will now move on to item five, Public Comment and Communications. Each person will have two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect, we ask that everyone stick to their two-minute time frame. Thank you. Julianne, how many speakers do we have? And go ahead and begin the call.
Apologies, Madam Chair. Did we want to start with the communication items first?
Oh, I'm sorry. There I go again. Excuse me, I just jumped right into my...
No worries.
Five A Communications, Dr. Lindstrom, Behavioral Health Initiative.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Given that last proclamation, I understand now why you've had me running so hard since I got here. Earlier in the summer, Commissioner Casada asked us to look into mobile sanitation or hygiene units. These come in a variety of different nomenclature, and the Behavioral Health Division approached one of our valuation organizations that we work with about doing some background research so that we could be more knowledgeable about this new capability, and you would have more information in terms of how you'd like to direct us going forward. You may recall, in the last session, we attempted to do a presentation remotely, and we couldn't access audio. So we insisted that we have a live presenter, and we have Jamie Duval from Apex Evaluation with us currently. Come on up, Jamie. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. Thank you. I'll put my slides in real quick.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Duval. I use the pronoun she here. I've been invited tonight to come and present on a literature review that my company, Apex Evaluation, conducted on behalf of the Burnley County Behavioral Health Initiative. We're going to be discussing, sorry, one sec. Not touchscreen. Okay. Sorry, you guys. So I'm going to be discussing water sanitation and hygiene, and wash insecurity in mobile hygiene units. So what is the need? Housing insecurity is a crisis in New Mexico and across the country. 20,000 people living in New Mexico experiencing, experience housing insecurity, and according to a 2024 point-in-time count, 2,740 community members in Albuquerque are experiencing housing insecurity. So a couple of definitions that are going to be covered throughout the presentation are WASH, which is Water Sanitation and Hygiene Systems, and the Water Access Gap, which means limited or no access to WASH systems. So this is a public health crisis that's affecting 2.2 million Americans who live within the water access gap. The lack of WASH access can lead to infectious disease outbreaks, negative impacts on mental health, and increased chances of long-term housing insecurity. These public health concerns affect everyone in our community. In common health concerns that come up are respiratory illnesses, skin infections, dehydration, diarrhea, urinary tract infections, and parasites. These public health issues that are affecting our entire community can be mitigated, controlled, and cured by improving WASH access. Lack of WASH access also has economic impacts, such as the water access gap costs the U.S. economy $8.85 billion annually, and expanding WASH access creates a 4.65 in net societal return for every dollar invested. So one solution that we kept coming across in the literature is mobile hygiene units. Mobile hygiene units increase WASH access, which provides showers, toilets, and laundry facilities for those that are experiencing housing insecurity. They could also be great hubs for community services. So things like caseworkers, health clinics, having strong partnerships and having collaboration with the community partners can help the community members get much-needed services, which include, you know, working with community organizations, donors, and sponsors. So mobile hygiene, throughout our research, we've learned about a lot of what other cities are doing to address WASH access. We found 20 notable WASH units, or WASH operators, and of those 20, they had 109-plus mobile WASH units that they have deployed. Most of these folks started providing these services between 2014 and 2018, and they have 34 years combined services and experience. According to the research that we did, one station can provide 2,000 to 3,000 showers a month and 750 loads of laundry to community members. Of those 20 notable WASH operators, they have provided services to over 117,000 people, over 388,000 showers, and over 117,000 loads of laundry. So there are some things that need to be considered whenever you're implementing WASH. So upkeep and maintenance came up a lot, so making sure that they had maintenance for the truck and the trailer, and then also contracting with cleaners to keep the units clean. And then there was also community needs that needed to be thought about, which are collaborating, collaborating with churches and public libraries, and avoiding locations that are near private residences. And you also want to try to have the units in places that are near unhoused communities. Advertising and communicating services was also very important. So having set schedules with the location that the unit's going to be was important. Word of mouth was how the information got shared, and then some folks were doing public murals and signs to help promote the WASH units. So with the Mobile Hygiene Best Practices, we curated a few recommendations from the operators. So one was having a regular pickup truck that can haul the unit and the stalls, and you want to make sure that you don't have to have a CDL license. That makes it easier. Having private stalls, including an ADA-compliant stall, having a Sharps container, and having mobile hygiene kits in the unit. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Casada?
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I just have more of a comment. Thank you so much. I think that data kind of speaks for itself. I just knew that there was something we could do in a shorter amount of time. I think, but I think one thing that was missed, and this is my comment, is that, you know, a lot of the emails I've received through my office was really from business owners, having to go to their, you know, their businesses an hour early to clean feces and all these things off of their sidewalks, and I don't think that was kind of really put on this presentation, but how that will affect not only their lives, but the businesses and the small businesses in these areas where they're at, to be able to, you know, mitigate that. My idea was pretty simple. People need the bathroom. That's just, you know, a fact of life, pets as well, right? And so we do a lot for our pets. When you walk your pets, you have to pick up after your pets and stuff like that. People, not so much. So what's the solution to that? Give them opportunity to do that. And I agree that there should be, you know, providers there. I think once somebody gets to the point where they may feel a little more human again, maybe they're a little more open to talk about maybe programs or moving their life in a different direction. But when you don't feel that way, it's really hard to move that way. And so I just really 100% believe that this will impact this community in a very, very positive way. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I absolutely agree, and I would like to draw your attention to the agenda packet where the full literature review is. There's a lot more detail in there.
Vice Chair Olivas, and then Commissioner Barbeau.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for this important work that you did here. I guess I have a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to say is just because I think we, you know, this has been pretty well-publicized, and we do have, you know, decent audience probably now and watching, just for those business owners, homeowners, people that do encounter, you know, feces on the streets, the city of Albuquerque does now have a program. Call 311 or use your 311 app to report where that is, and they have a contractor that'll go out and clean it up. And I think that's an amazing service, and a huge kudos to the counselors and the city administration that have implemented that and made that happen, because that's a huge complaint that I hear all the time. And, you know, in my business landscaping work, commercial properties, we see it all the time. So I really do feel like, you know, those cries have been heard, and I think that, you know, we at least have something on the table. But this is sort of that, that's the immediate solution, right? Is clean it up. This, to me, is more of that medium-term solution of, okay, how do we sort of reduce that amount of feces and those other things? This isn't just about restrooms. This is about the hygiene and washing clothes, all that stuff. But the long-term piece is also really important, and I want to make sure that whatever we do on this, on this medium term, doesn't take away from that long-term solution, because, you know, the long term here is all about more housing. And I would also add, it's about permanent public restrooms. And, you know, we have two permanent public restrooms in the metropolitan area. That's one in Old Town and one in Uptown, which are good places to start, for sure, but they're nowhere near sort of what the need is. And so, you know, I'm a little conflicted on this just because, you know, people got to use the bathroom, and they got to use the bathroom a lot more than once a week or whatever this is scheduled. And so that would be for showers, for clothes washing. I see this as being like, you know, a pretty good model. As far as the actual restroom services, I'm a little more concerned that we're still leaving a pretty big gap there, because, you know, where do you go on Tuesday and Wednesday? And, you know, if it's there one day a week in your neighborhood. And I don't think people are going to sort of move around to follow this thing. I think that's a lot to ask of a population that has very limited access to transport. So I guess that's kind of one concern I have about this, but I can definitely see the utility. I guess the real direct question I have, I've just been talking here, but the direct question I have is, how many individuals, like, you know, how many FTEs would we need in order to actually operate one of these units? And do you have any kind of a projection as to sort of, how many units do we actually need? You know, we could do this, obviously, as a pilot, but sort of... You know, we could do this obviously as a pilot, but sort of, how many would we need? How many people would we need? And what would be the cost per unit, both to start up and to operate?
Yeah, we didn't do thorough research on that. However, there are some links to some mobile hygiene toolkits. So some people that are really doing great work across the country, they created toolkits to kind of help guide. They've got some recommendations. I will say that a lot of the units are run by volunteers, which is why, you know, partnering with local churches and community organizations to try to get those mobile units up and running has been really key in making these successful.
Okay. I think that's all I have on this. I really appreciate your, your help in spotlighting this, and that's all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barboah, and then Commissioner Benson. And Dr. Lindstrom, did you have an additional comment on that last?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Assuming you concur, I would see as the next stage for us to do exactly what the Commissioner was talking about is that we provide you with some options that if we decided to meet the homeless need relative to these kinds of facilities, we would need X number of units. Here's what the cost would be. Here's what the number of FTEs we need to support it. If we're talking about a 50% target or a 25% target, so that you would know exactly what the options are, the cost implications, et cetera, and that would be our next step.
Commissioner Barboah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for bringing this forth. I, so little bit of history there. Was a community group, and right now Pastor Landry, who serves the Compassion Center in southeast Albuquerque, has our mobile unit that I think the county and the city partnered on. And it was a mobile, it's a mobile, it's, it's not really intended for bathrooms, although it provides the relief when it's in the place, right? But there was a lot of complications. The community actually raised the funding for it. So community groups came together and individuals and raised the money for it, and it got delivered, and it was actually parked in, I bet someone from the county would have some of the historical knowledge. It was actually parked in Commissioner O'Malley's house for a while, and then finally they figured out, because of some of the barriers, which I'm assuming were government barriers to being able to drive it or maybe staff it, I think it was more complicated around the mobile unit and the need for water and how they'd have to get permission to do it. So I think there is some government or local boundaries to it, because the first intention was to have that mobile unit like one that we visited in Denver that does, like you said, just, you know, goes to a few different spots. They know every Tuesday it's going to be at this spot, every Thursday it's going to be this spot, and so people can rely on it both to wash their clothes and to take showers. I think those were the main purposes of the mobile units, not to really, I don't think it's really going to address, like you said, the bathroom need, the use for, you know, feces and such, but that definitely there's a need for being able to take a shower, get water, and wash clothes. I see Paul Chavis from State of the Heart Recovery in the audience, and I remember he told me a story one time of, yes, somebody got on methadone, was got a job, was trying to work, but they did not have housing, so they were waking up and from wherever they were sleeping, going, getting their methadone, and taking a shower at State of the Heart Recovery. But how long can that last if you don't have clear access and you have to find a, for somebody who's trying? So I think the more of these, the better. I just think we do need to learn from what has already happened and whatever the barriers were, because now it's parked at and making really good use. So I'm not trying to set any alarms off there, but the Compassion Center is using it regularly. The folks who go there love it, are so thankful that they get to have access to taking showers. So it's an important need, agree, and let's make sure we learn the lessons from whatever reasons it wasn't able to be mobile for the previous efforts.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah, I think I mentioned in a previous commission meeting that I spent a good deal of time with the city of Santa Fe. It took them four years to actually implement one mobile unit in the county, and we have all their policies and procedures and the lessons learned, et cetera. And we will also, and have reviewed the literature relative to what some of those barriers and complications and how they, those got worked through. So yeah, that will be all part of the scope of work that we will take on.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I've got a question about the water access, and I'm usually not the one to ask this. It's usually my colleagues when they ask businesses or homeowners with wells, but where is the water coming from? What's the usage amount? And, and what happens with the, the black water? And also, we usually have a lot of comment about water usage, so just preempting that for you, if you could answer those.
Yeah, so it varies by the unit that you purchase, but some of them have like water containers on them that you could fill up. They're all self-sustaining. Other units actually partner with the community organizations to hook up to the water or whatever facilities that they need to use, electricity. So it really depends on the unit, how transportable you want it to be and whether or not you want to have it fully contained or if you need to hook up to outside resources.
Is where are you getting the water?
That's a really good question.
And, and how do you dispose of the black water? How is that being treated?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I don't know that we're prepared to answer those questions at the present time. Those are all logistics that we will have to attend to. So where the water would come from, how it would be disposed of, et cetera, whether we would actually only choose sites where we could either have access to water and appropriate disposal, or perhaps we take on the expense of having those hookups available where we end up locating these units.
Thank you. Yeah, I think those questions need to be, we hold, we hold everybody else responsible for their water usage, and so those questions do need to be addressed. Thank you.
Commissioner Casado, then Commissioner Barboah.
So real quick, you know, I'm an RV owner. Plenty of places to dump your black water, but I think even a better idea would be partnering with the Water Utility Authority. They have their processing plant in the South Valley, and they would probably be the best to treat that water for reuse. And I think that's a great idea. I'm glad you're looking at that, because that, that would be a great partnership with, you know, the Water Utility Authority. It may be, we do a presentation to that government board, and they can maybe come up with some ideas of how to do that. I agree, we're going to need more than one. But my, I guess my, my original idea was, you know, we don't have to be at a place all day. We could be at a place for a couple hours, and then another place for a couple hours, and another place for a couple hours, because if you know the city as well and drive around as well as I do, there's big pockets of places where we see. There's a big pocket in, in my district on West Central. There's a big pocket in Commissioner Barboah's district on Central near the, right? So we know that, and we also know by the old Coronado Park, they're not gone from there. The park is gone, but they are not gone. So tho, those would be my ideas for three spots as we grow, and as a place really to work out the kinks and, and the bugs, because I agree, we wouldn't want to invest in anymore unless we knew we could actually pull it off and do it and do it properly. And I agree with that. So it was just an idea. But before I, I turn it over, I got a comment from a constituent from District One. Terry Storch sent a letter saying that the provoke, to, the proposal to provide showers, toilets, and sinks to unhoused community members who live on the streets and have a difficult time maintaining hygiene is a step in the right direction. It recognizes the basic needs of the unhoused, including their dignity, and recognizes the city and the county's need to maintain public health. While it is by no means adequate to address the hygiene needs of the unhoused in the community at large, it is well worth seeing what positive impacts it could have. One news, one news account indicated that it will be a mobile unit. It is not clear if there will be more than one unit. I would expect it would be more, have a predictable schedule of where it could be every week, same place, same time, same day of the week. I could hope that a pilot project, whatever the cost of the contractual obligations are, if successful, would be public support to establish locations for public toilets for the use by the unhoused, creating sufficient housing for our unhoused community members seems a distant goal at the current pace, and a midway provision are essential. So I'd like to thank Terry Storch for sending that. It's very well thought out, very well written. I think it speaks from what everybody's comments were here. I think it addressed them all. I should have started with this, sorry, guys. But, but that's what I want to just throw my two cents in, hoping that it'd be two hours here, you know, two hours there, or maybe three hours, depending on, on the use. And if nobody's using it, we say, hey, let's move to the next location. It, it's a pilot. We'll, we'll, we'll have to work to the bugs. But I, before I, and thank you, Dr. Lindstrom, for the research. I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but thank you for the presentation. I think you did your due diligence, and thank you for doing the research going up to Santa Fe. And, and I, and I agree with all my colleagues up here that there has to be bugs worked out and that we can't repeat things that have happened in the past. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation, Dr. Lindstrom. Thank you. There's a lot of questions that I think that you have told us that you're going to research. We'll be, we'll be talking about this, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5B, Community Services, Burnley County Extension Services. John Garish to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, fellow commissioners and staff. It's great to be back in front of everybody tonight. Let's see, is my presentation up and going or?
There you go.
Perfect. So a few highlights. I can't believe that summer has already ended and fall is begun. So with that, our master gardeners have produced close to 1,600 pounds of produce donated to the Roadrunner Food Bank. We're getting ready for the sweet potato harvest, and our goal is to get to 2,000 pounds of harvested produce donated out to the community. Our hotline site visits and samples are still going on, and our new class of master gardeners registration will begin here in mid-October. For myself and agriculture, I'm still helping out with the Grow the Growers training program. I'm part of the collaborative program support, and on Thursday, we're having our end-of-season presentations, where many of our incubators will be giving presentations about their next steps within agriculture, as well as hearing some who are already on-farm, what their next steps in expanding to growth produce. And here we have one of our young farmers, second year in the program, bringing tomatoes for the food preservation class held down at Gutierrez Hubble House. Also supporting the Los Rancho's ongoing classes, we'll be doing food preservation on Thursday, as well as forage and alfalfa on Saturday. And in two weeks, I'll be doing soil tests and how to read your results, so helping out the small farmers with growing. Earlier this summer, we helped out the BioPark with all of their training for pests and diseases, and then helping out Burnley County with tree health assessments and their vegetative management plan coming up. Our food preservation and food entrepreneurial, we hosted a workshop called Living on Five Acres. It was a program with the Indian Pueblo Cultural Center and geared for our tribal producers, helping out with food preservation, food entrepreneurship, and we've been out, that three of the Publlos already teaching food preservation to various communities. We've worked with the Gutierrez Hubble House at pressure canning, freeze drying, and apple products, and we're looking to do kombucha, how to preserve your green chili. We'll be doing prickly pear products at the Prickly Pear Festival coming up, and then doing meats and jerkies. And also, we'll be working with some of the Burnley County Senior Division and doing some classes with them on food preservation for seniors and how to do healthy living with seniors. For health and wellness, we're doing the Extension Get Fit, which is helping out seniors with healthy habits, especially with exercise and mobility, how to pick yourself up from a fall, how to manage yourself, how to even do walking and weights, but how you also manage chronic diseases like diabetes. So we'll be doing some kitchen creations, diabetes education, as well as exercise classes, walking with ease for those with arthritis, how to work with that mobility. And this year, our agent Diane Christensen got a national award for her programming on how to live with inflation for seniors, financial education. So how do you stretch that budget? How do you live on Social Security and meager means, but how can you make that go further? So she won a national award for that, and she's also being elected the next president for the National Association of Extension Home Economists. So I appreciate her leadership on the national level. And also, we've been working on a program called Mind Matters, which was also featured at the national conference, and it's working with people who have had trauma in their youth or in adults. And this is a program we've been working with tender-loving care, as well as underserved military youth on mental health management strategies. So how to do exercise, how to do, whether it might be talking, or how to address some of those issues in a safe space. So that has been a great opportunity to help people who have gone through trauma to heal and also find a place and feel restored. Our nutrition education through SNAP Ed, we're currently helping out 1,200 youth spread over eight Title I schools, both elementary and mid-school for the fall semester. We hope to be serving that many, if not more, for the spring semester, and we're currently educating 200 adults. Some are childcare providers, also working out with Joy Junction, Covenant, New Horizons, and Serenam, and we're adapting our curriculum to be working with the adults, with developmental disabled people at Cornucopia. So how to do nutrition education for adults who may not have the means, or how to live, even if you're, don't have all the financial resources, how you can still eat healthy and live healthy and not just eat junk food all the time. So those are some great programs we're doing through our SNAP education program. Our 4H Youth Development, we finished up the county and state fair, and like to thank the Burnley County Community Services folks for coming out to the county fair to visit with our young kids, watching some of the shows, and talking and interviewing with all the young kids. This year, our 4H building, they're at the office, hosted the New Mexico State 4H Food Challenge in conjunction with the Department of Agriculture and CNM College. They came out to judge, interviewed the kids. We had 15 teams, almost 100 kids from around the state of New Mexico here, and our National Food Challenge winners, one from our county is going to Dallas for the National Food Challenge competition. This year, we're also doing some STEM education in the schools, Growing on the Moon. It'll be in four, four schools, as well as with our military youth. So how can we grow food on the moon and on Mars? And that might have applicability here in New Mexico with lack of water and drier soils. How can we grow food here afterwards? So there'll be some great opportunities here for our kids, growing on the moon, growing here in New Mexico. And our new 4H year will begin on October 1, so we, we opened up our 4H registration. So if you know kids who would like to join our 4H program, please get them in contact with the, our office. And lastly, our community support. We are, our, the 4H building that's been host to the Burnley County Senior Food Bank site, that has been a great success. I think we're up to close to 100 people, if not more, coming once a month to receive food. The Roadrunner Food Bank has also had a drive-through pantry. Here you can see people loading up their vehicles with fresh peaches. Also, our site has been supporting the state 4H office, as well as the statewide extension to host lots of clinics, workshops, and conferences, and we'll be also hosting the New Mexico State Food Safety Convention to help work with local farmers to get more safe food into our schools, senior centers, et cetera. So we're doing lots of work. We're keeping busy all the way, and we just thank you for your continued support.
Thank you so much, Mr. Garish. Any questions or comments? Or Commissioner Barboah?
Just appreciations. Thank you. This is a lot. And when it says extension services, that's because you're part of the Burnley County and it's cooperative? I understand why it's named extension.
And so it is a cooperation between the United States Department of Agriculture, New Mexico State University, and your local counties all throughout the United States. So we are an extension of the Burnley County, an extension of the Langgraff University system, and an extension of the United States Department of Agriculture in its food division. So we're kind of an extension of everything and conjoining all of the different government organizations to bring education and benefit to the community, whether it be in agriculture, home economics, foods, wellness, and youth education.
I love it, and thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr.
You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair and thank you, fellow commissioners.
And now we move back to public comment. My apologies for my jumping ahead. Again, each person will have two minutes and you will be notified when your time is up. Please, um, let us know your name before you begin speaking, if you're here in person or online. And, um, Julianne, now let's look at, uh, who's here to speak and she will be calling your name.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have twenty speakers this evening. We will start with in-person, starting off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Danielle Casey, followed by Joan Baker.
Don Schrader. I would be ashamed as hell to watch football, boxing and all violent sports. The donated brains of a hundred and ten out of a hundred and eleven dead former NFL players had serious brain disease. Many football players suffer concussions. Concussions cause severe headaches, Alzheimer's, depression. Concussions cause alcoholism, other drug addiction, violence toward family and friends, suicide. The donated brains of a hundred and ten out of a hundred and eleven dead former NFL players had serious brain disease. Why do mothers and fathers watch and cheer as their sons bruise, injure and bloody other men in football or as boxers? Why do mothers and fathers celebrate pain and violence between men? Why do many mothers and fathers curse their sons for giving and receiving affectionate sexual pleasure with their male buddies? Why are many mothers and fathers proud of their sons severely injuring themselves and other men for money, fame and awards? Why cheer, pain and violence between men? Why damn affectionate sex and passionate romance between men?
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Danielle Casey. Followed by Joan Baker, followed by Dr. Gerardo Cionello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. Pleasure to be here. Danielle Casey, I'm the President and CEO with the Albuquerque Regional Economic Alliance. I believe I was here to make comment on the same item when it was originally introduced. I simply want to speak in support of item eight A tonight, uh, which is the ordinance for the industrial revenue bond for Ebon Solar, also known as Project Apollo, which we've had the pleasure of spending many, many hours on. We're very excited about this investment and I just want to share the critical importance of, uh, of an industrial revenue bond as a mechanism to allow a project like this to proceed, which is going to invest a billion dollars in the community. I have a hard time even comprehending that amount of investment and, uh, and financial resources. Our region does lack shovel-ready sites with developed infrastructure for opportunities like these and construction costs and timelines simply are not competitive on their own in our market. And so, uh, and, and in comparison with other markets that are under consideration for projects like these and that have been under consideration originally, um, for projects like Ebon. So securing this investment obviously will be a critical driver of the growth of our position as a leader in the renewable energy sector, creating strong range growth, industrial diversification and career opportunities. And just for the good of the community, I wanted to share that, um, in just the first three years alone of this operation, in addition to the direct jobs, we're estimating another three hundred and seventy indirect jobs to be created in the community in all kinds of business and industry. So I, and, and that's again, only the first three years. Ebon's demonstrated its desire to be highly engaged with the community and you also have comment that was submitted by President Tracy Hartzler of CNM indicating their strong partnership and desire to work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Casey.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Joan Baker. I'm the Political Affairs Director for the United Association Local 412. We represent and train plumbers, pipe fitters, HVAC technicians and welders. Um, I'm here to speak in support of the IRB for Ebon Solar and to thank the Commissioners for your vision in supporting our economy in higher ways, in better ways. Registered apprenticeship, when we look at building something like Ebon, registered apprenticeship is the gold standard for ensuring that we have the skilled tradespeople to build it and the skilled tradespeople here at home. So on Third and Mountain, we have a program called Apprenticeship Riddiness where we, um, Local 412 reaches into vulnerable communities and we have developed, uh, a campaign called Path, Skilled Trades, A Pathway Out of Poverty. And I know some of you Commissioners have visited my training center and seen the amazing things that we can do there and produce there and the individuals that we can get great careers with medical, dental, vision pensions, old school pensions. And so I'd like to thank you all for looking at registered apprenticeship and putting that important piece at the forefront. I do know that at this point, we, um, are not able to do a project labor agreement, but I'd like to encourage on industrial revenue bonds in the future to consider project labor agreements in the discussions. According to the Department of Labor, it helps with timely completion and increases equity, diversity and workforce development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Gerardo Cionello, followed by Jeffrey Still, followed by Tracy Hartzler.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners and staff, and thank you for your serving. As you know, that I'm an alternative, alternative health doctor and, uh, minister. There'll be a couple of speakers after me to talk about election and it's, uh, there's an article issued, I received by now by Danny Snyder from Stanson News and regarding whistleblower New Mexico election system encryption, encryption keys wide open to hackers. Recently, the DeKalb County Republican Party sued, uh, Georgia's Secretary of State for his failure to provide a secure election system. The serious security breach cited in the lawsuit exists in New Mexico's election sys, system as well, according to whistleblower information provided exclusively to the Stanson News. And the lawsuit states, and I quote, "The Dominion system mandated by the state use master cryptographic encryption keys to secure election systems. The purpose of using encryption election system is to prevent unauthorized access to those systems and to prevent malicious alteration of election results. These encryption keys must be kept secret from unauthorized access to comply with express requirements mandated by law, the Election Assistance Commission." In terms of the contract, the Dominion system not only stores the encryption keys on its election systems in a nonprofit or non-compliant unprotected state, it leaves them in plain stat, plain text within the election database on, on county systems. In this election, in this condition, anyone with access to that voting system or the transmission of election results can alter election results without life detection." End quote. In plain language, Dominion promises their clients that they will follow certain security protocols to comply with state and federal law to protect the election system. This protocol is defined by federal information processing standards and mandates encryption of certain files and practices for how the cryptographic keys are stored and protected. Thank you.
Jeffrey Still. Tracy Hartzler. Ilse Beal.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, thank you so much for your time and allowing me to be here. I represent Ironworkers Local 495. Uh, I also have been the apprenticeship coordinator there and I am currently a member of the Apprenticeship Training Advisory Committee that I was appointed to by Governor, uh, San, uh, Martinez. So I am here to support the Ebon, uh, uh, money to fund, to help fund that project, but also to kind of promote the apprenticeship portion of some of the language in there. We do have a, uh, shortage of skilled personnel. We do have a avenue to correct that and help fight that and that's through registered apprenticeship programs. And, uh, you know, the state apprenticeship council has a numerous, uh, number of apprenticeship programs that are registered that would all benefit from this type of language in this, maybe this project plus ones in the future. So, uh, if you could consider that, uh, it would be great and it would be nice to see that kind of language in these kind of programs in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Still.
Tracy Hartzler. Ilse Beal. Tanya Mullen. Go ahead, Ilse.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ilse Beal. I'm a full-time volunteer working mainly with folks who are still left to live outside. Been involved with a few of the previous attempts to get some mobile showers and washing stations going. So I truly applaud you. Thank you for getting the ball rolling. It is so urgent. I agree with you that of course, we've still got to look at the long-term solutions and this isn't a long-term solution, but frequently we then forget about what people need right now. And I work with the, um, Hookup Collaborative and we have monthly resource fairs. And the last few months, we've included a washing station, so very much a Yeats Robinson affair, okay? It started off with some plastic buckets where people could at least just wash their feet and wash their faces and then we progressed to some shower bags. We had a Hookup Resource Fair on Sunday at Essential Ministries and now we've got three, um, shower stalls and some shower bags and, um, all kinds of resources for the folks. So it's still incredibly rudimentary and grassroots and so on, but then seeing the people anxiously moving towards the washing station and then going into the stall and then they come out and they've, they get a razor and they've got a little mirror and they can shave themselves and they can put on some lotion and you can see the change in the body. It is an automatic change. It is huge. So yes, there is the public health, there is the dignity, but there's also just the sheer humanity of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beal.
Tanya Mullen, followed by Guadalupe Rembert, followed by Mary Ingham.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Tanya Mullen and I'm here tonight in support of adopting the Burnaleo County, uh, cultivating Burnaleo County Resolution. My grandmother raised her children as a single mother on fruits, nuts and vegetables grown on Katherine in Indiana and from publicly available edible vegetation, a tradition that she continued as she sent her grandchildren into the alley to harvest walnuts from a neighbor's tree and taught us to identify edible native plants and fed us food grown in the soil of the International District, which as you know, is our most vulnerable community in Albuquerque with the highest levels of housing, income and food insecurity, as well as a high number of residents dependent on public transportation, minimal grocery access and too few walkable urban agriculture sites open to the community in our neighborhoods. Acknowledging the food supply chain failures around the pandemic and that 2024 global average temperatures are higher than in any previously recorded 12-month period makes investing heavily in urban agriculture and food sovereignty a local and national security imperative. Locating multiple urban food sovereignty projects in our most disadvantaged neighborhoods may, in a worst-case scenario, unburden emergency food distribution systems and reduce hunger and in a best case, will offer walkable community garden to a larger or larger agricultural projects to every resident of the county. Productive after-school skill-building activities like learning to grow food, preserve food and agriculture plots for displaced refugee farmers and increase food system autonomy will strengthen our community and improve the physical and emotional well-being of our residents. As we grow food together, we build a more resilient community where humans and the pollinators who keep us alive are able to thrive. And I also strongly support the mobile wash unit. So thank you all for taking that up.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen.
Guadalupe Rembert. Mary Ingham. Stuart Ingham.
Good afternoon, my name is Guadalupe Rembert. Thank you for your time, Madam Chair and Commission. I would like, um, the opportunity to save one of the houses that is going to, that they're wanting to, um, demolish. I know the variances is, was in question. So I know one of the houses we can't do anything about because it's so close, but the other one, we can cut the back half off to meet the setbacks and, uh, to bring everything in compliance. I have hired, um, a contractor, licensed contractor to be able to, um, be able to do this so we can at least please save one, one home.
Thank you, Ms. Rembert, and I'm, thank you very much for coming. Director Ham, our Director of Planning, will be speaking to these later on in, in the meeting and he has, uh, told me that he will be willing to work with you as, as we move forward on this. Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Mary Ingham. I'm going to be continuing Dr. Cionello's comments. We're talking about the Dominion voting system. It has woefully failed to follow even the most basic security practices. Shockingly, Dominion stores the encryption keys in plain text within the same database that they are supposed to be protecting. This means that anyone with access to any part of the election system can get the encryption keys, decrypt the data, alter it, re-encrypt it, and there would be no record of the change in the system. New Mexico uses the same election system as Georgia and it is confirmed that the encryption keys are stored in plain text on the election databases. The encryption keys were used by a cyber, cybersecurity expert that, that were achieved through a public document request, um, from the Lee County Clerk. And they were used by, by him to work with our whistleblowers to easily decrypt the election database for New Mexico's election system. Shockingly, the passwords for supervisors and technicians were all the same and so basic that virtually any novice could guess what it is. The super administrator password, which allows full access to the entire election system, was essentially the same with only two additional digits to guess. Based on conversations with two New Mexico County clerks, we have good reason to believe that the same insecure passwords are used in every county and on every election machine throughout the state of New Mexico. So we, we argue that the fact that our election system is open wide to manipulation and that we claim that the election system is not, um, that the Secretary of State claims that is never connected to the internet so bad actors can't get access to the database. And there are several reasons, um, that the Secretary of State, um, would be wrong with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Stuart Ingham, followed by Naidi Dominguez, followed by Janice Cardenas.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just to continue this, um, further Maggie Thales Oliver has testified before the U.S. Senate that she has provided access to all election jurisdictions in the state to a private organization called the Center for Internet Security. She has done this by installing internet-connected devices called Albert sensors behind county firewalls that give CIS full access to everything on the county networks. If CIS has rem- firewalls that give CIS full access to everything on the county networks. If CIS has remote access to every county election system, it necessarily means the election system is online and accessible to bad actors. Lastly, New Mexico's official election results aren't even processed on the supposedly offline Dominion election soft system. Rather, they're illegally transferred over to an uncertified cloud-based internet-connected software system, SERBIS. This transfer is done using USB devices provided by third parties, leaving open multiple other opportunities for both Dominion and service software to be hacked and manipulated. Our statute says a voting system that does not comply with all requirements of the election code and the most recent voluntary, uh, voting system guidelines adopted and implemented by the United States Election Assistance Commission shall be desatisfied for this, for use in this state. The, um, anyway, I just want to say, w- we do appreciate Bernalillo County's, uh, efforts to be, uh, to secure our elections. We feel like these election insecurities are mandated by our state, but that our county needs to address those, those insecurities and bring that to the Secretary of State. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Nady Dominguez. I'm the Executive Director of Organized Power and Numbers. We are a worker organization here in Bernalillo County. We work with underemployed workers, temp workers, immigrant workers, all who are part of our workforce in the county. And I'm here to support the IRB for, um, Ebon. And we think that, you know, the potential here is immense. Like other people have said, it's going to create good clean energy jobs for the county, which we hope many of our members will benefit by going through the pre-apprenticeship programs and apprenticeship programs that you did adopt in the language. So we thank you for that. However, we do think, like many other folks have already said, there was a missed opportunity to have stronger worker standards through a project labor agreement. And we really think that we know in this moment, because of the IRA, because of all the federal funding coming down the pipe, this is not going to be the only time you're going to have an opportunity to bring in a company to create good union jobs, to make a big, big, big impact in our community. And we want to make sure that for the significant tax breaks you're going to give them, that we have an investment back to our community. And so we think that we need to make sure that the next one to come has stronger standards. And we think that there's a way that we can get ahead of this by all of you considering the role of labor in community groups like ours to create a vehicle to make sure that both Ebon and any company that comes forward is actually enforcing what they're saying they're going to do. We believe in good faith efforts. We think that that is definitely demonstrated in the IRB, but we don't want to leave it up to chance, right? And I think, given our tax dollars that are going into this project, we definitely don't want to leave it to chance. And we think that we have the expertise and the experts in the room, both in the labor movement and the immigrant rights and workers' rights movement in our community, to do it right and monitor it. And I think we can play a role officially with you to do that. So we hope that you consider thinking through enforcement mechanisms for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez.
Janice Cardenas, followed by Zach Withers, followed by Rudolph Serano.
Hello. Thank you all for your time. My name is Janice Cardenas. I'm also with Organized Power and Numbers. And we're all, we're all very excited that this project's potential, that the potential in, um, in clean energy that is coming to Bernalillo County. Um, the county is providing Ebon with a significant tax break, um, through this IRB, and we, we need a return on our investment. So I also support the Registered Apprenticeship Program so that we do build up the workforce that we need here in Bernalillo County, especially if we, um, we are, we are welcoming, um, the industry, the clean energy industry. And, um, we want to know that a lot, that there are going to be local hires. We appreciate the 50% that is into IR, IRB currently. Uh, but we also want these to be good jobs. And, um, also that there should be strong oversight and enforcement so that we know that this project lives up to its potential because there is so much, uh, potential with this project. And, um, and Ebon and beyond, we want to be, uh, we want to just ensure that community and labor are included, um, in the earliest stages of the planning and so that, that this continues to be meaningful. And again, that, um, Bernalillo County residents are getting the return on investment and that, um, that this is an opportunity where really we can build up the workforce and, um, really start pulling our families out of poverty. Like this is, this is a moment that, um, that we are present here and say that we want to be a part of with everyone. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cardenas.
Hi, Madam Chair. Uh, my name's Zach Withers. I'm a farmer from the East Mountains, and I am here to speak in support of the resolution, uh, referred to in 9A, Cultivating Bernalillo County. And I encourage the Commission to promote agricultural practices that promote soil health, uh, by minimizing disturbance, keeping the soil covered, keeping living roots, um, well-defined suite of practices that's being supported at the state and federal level, um, to build resilience in agriculture. Uh, I'd also encourage you to support food production, nutrient-dense food for local people instead of supporting commodity agriculture for, uh, more extract, extractive and national-scale food system. Um, I would thank the Commission for some efforts over the last years in supporting local agriculture. Raw milk has made a huge difference to a lot of producers. So has ungraded eggs. Those has a real impact on fostering resilience in the local food system. Um, I would also encourage the Commission to consider supporting agriculture on lands that the Commission doesn't own or that the county doesn't own and addressing some of the institutional violence that is, uh, causing agricultural lands to be subdivided, wells going dry, streams drying up, um, and address the bigger issues at play here and use the agricultural lands that you own as a way to demonstrate how we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rebecca, Commissioners, uh, well, we're in the poop business. I haven't had calls, but, uh, I'll share more stories from you. When you're homeless, you poop behind the containers because they don't let you in. But you really don't want to poop there because that's where you're going to sleep. You know, you don't want to pee there either. So what I did, uh, I got a container to pee and a container to poop, and then I put that bag in the garbage and I throw it. So we need to teach our homeless how to do this. And maybe that will help us to have a little bit cleaner for the people that cannot pay for our services. Um, the other thing is, uh, those wash, uh, showers and things, they're great, but maybe we can come as a community and start building it ourselves instead of buying it from somewhere else. This is a great opportunity to create national businesses. And, uh, I'll be talking more on that. Same thing with the plastic places where people go sleep and poop, they burn them. The PTSD cruiser, the one I've been sharing with you guys, is metal because of that reason. I already got a homie over there smoking, falling up and, and then burning inside everything. So metal is the answer. I've never come here without an answer to tell you something. So that's my answers today. And, um, the other thing, uh, I, like I say, I come here for God, and God, uh, introduced me to this man that, uh, he bought a $10,000 property for $120,000. You know, they, they abuse of our, our immigrants. They sell them properties. They tell them they can do whatever they want, and, uh, they believe in the American dream, and, uh, it's all a lie for them. You know, their, their real estate managers don't tell them that they cannot build, they, they cannot put anything in that land but cows. And, um, this gentleman that I met, you know, it wasn't the impression that he couldn't do that, you know? And I think the real estate agent goes further and tell them that he's got rights when, uh, it's against the law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eliseo Caraya Gonzalez. Hugo Machuca.
Buenas tardes. ¿Cómo están?
Good afternoon. How are you?
Estoy aquí porque quieren sacarme de mi propiedad que estoy pagando y no sé mucho de leyes o todo eso. Solamente estoy buscando un permiso si alguien puede ayudarme o para estar ahí. Hay mucha gente ahí arriba que tiene casas, bodegas, eh, muchísimas cosas y a mí me quieren sacar nomás porque tengo unas cuantas cosas ahí en la propiedad.
Okay. I'm here to looking for some help because I, I live in a, in a property where there's a lot of people with a lot of things, and, uh, they don't go after them. Uh, they go just after me, and I don't know anything about law. I don't know where to go to get help or, or anything.
Quieren que remueva todo lo que tengo ahí, uh, el cerco.
They want me to move, uh, the pens that I put, I put a pens for horses of the other people.
Quieren que saquen mis, uh, tengo tres o cuatro perros y quieren, absolutamente no quieren que tenga nada.
They, I got four dogs, and they, they absolutely don't want me to have anything there.
Estoy buscando que alguien me ayude nomás para si puedo obtener un permiso para estar ahí.
I'm just looking for some help to, to somebody to give me a permit so I, I can stay, my, my things can stay there. He lives in Suni because of his kids.
Es todo lo que pido nomás si alguien puede ayudarme para no perder mi propiedad.
So I, I, all I'm asking you is, uh, for some help so I don't have to lose my property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to see if, if, uh, someone from our, I'm not sure if this is where this property is located, if this is in the city or the county, but if somebody maybe from our, uh, Planning and Development Group could just, uh, exchange information to, to make sure that we can try to direct you to the, the best possible place. Thank you, Director.
Hugo Machuca. Okay, we'll proceed with online speakers, starting with Zia Martinez.
Just a moment, Ms. Martinez. Um, we have one more in person.
Apologies. Um, may I read this for Hugo? Hi.
State your name for the records, sorry.
Yes, hi, my name is Victoria Gomez. Um, good evening, Commissioners. Um, I'm reading this on behalf of Hugo. So, um, my name is Hugo Machucha. Um, I'm a youth and reentry specialist and a member of OLE. I wanted to first express my gratitude on behalf of OLE and our community for your efforts in making the Ebon IRB language as strong as possible to ensure it provides good jobs and apprenticeships for our communities. This is especially important for young people and those reintegrating into society. Um, many of our, many of the individuals who are coming out of incarceration face significant barriers to employment, and the opportunities provided by good jobs and apprenticeships can be life-changing. If we're going to grant Ebon such a significant tax break, it's crucial that we secure meaningful employment for New Mexicans, particularly for those seeking a second chance. And, um, I'd like to ask the Commission, um, to have, you know, stronger language, something like 3% of all hires shall be from reentry and youth populations. I also appreciate your focus on economic development that not only benefits the local economy, but also addresses critical issues like climate change. Um, by bringing in companies like Ebon, which are working towards a sustainable future, we can ensure that our efforts benefit both our environment and our community's long-term well-being. So thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zia Martinez.
Yes, good evening. Um, my name is Zia Martinez. I've been an urban farmer for nine years now. Um, and I stand as a testament to how impactful agricultural education can be. Uh, six months after my mom passed away from cancer, I applied to a summer farming internship in the South Valley. It changed the direction of my life by giving me cultural connection, community empathy, and a lot of perspective. I kept these lessons moving into my 100 volunteer hours. Uh, I needed to graduate from high school, which was in 2018, so not that long ago. I mostly spent this time assisting at Van Beeran Middle School in their garden elective program. This theme of agriculture and education has followed me up until now. So far, I've stewarded nine seasons of summer internships, managed and developed over 10 urban green spaces, and a small stint worked with the Bernalillo County as their resource specialist for their Urban Act project in the International District. Every person who works with youth and outdoor learning has life-changing stories. We witnessed students bloom in gardens. The quietest, most with, most withdrawn students, um, started teaching groups of their peers. Intergenerational connections, when a student who never really talked with their silent grandparent, um, getting to hear their life story as they built a garden at their house. Um, we watched them dream bravely and think creatively for solutions when they're caretaking these spaces. Um, and that's one of the most impactful parts of urban green spaces. They bring us together, be it harvesting barriers after work, planning an open event or workshop, trading seeds and clippings, or in recent times, getting entire neighborhoods together to transform their empty alleyways. When I started nine years ago, I never saw myself being a food justice organizer, never would have imagined I'd be at the forefront of thinking critically on how our food systems, um, work and how to feed our communities. But I'm so thankful to be a part of this intergenerational movement of safe green space evolution and a community that so desperately needs them.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Moving on to Anton Becker Stumpf.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Anton Becker Stumpf. I am here today in support of the adoption of the Cultivating Bernalillo County Resolution. As you have heard and will hear from many of the other presenters, tonight, this resolution is incredibly important and profound, and its possible impacts the health and happiness of Albuquerque residents. I am a local grower in the Albuquerque area that has been taught by numerous generations of New Mexico farmers of the longstanding traditions of land stewardship, communal growing practices deeply rooted in our state's history. For nearly a decade now, I have been fortunate enough to find support and mentorship through many incredible organizations and teachers who have given me the tools and knowledge to grow food for the community that has raised me. I am now the farm manager at Project Feed the Hood, an agroecology center and mutual aid farm located in District Six, aiming to be a model project to demonstrate just how impactful and vital local and herbal, urban agriculture can be to underserved communities. Through this work, we have been able to share this knowledge and practices passed down with over 1,200 hours of volunteer engagement this year alone, as well as aiding in the relief to food insecurity present across the city, particularly within District Six, by distributing around 4,000 pounds of organic produce to food banks over the last year. This district where I have grown up has seen regression in food access and safe, open spaces where community can reconnect with this longstanding tradition of local and communal agriculture. And it is evident that much more must be done in order to combat this regression. It is clear that continued and sustained support from the county can play an important role in joining the community's efforts to address many issues that are present in our shared community. But the adoption of this resolution is my hope that the future generations raised here can have open and enriching avenues to serve their community in the same way I have been fortunate enough to follow, and that the district I work in and all surrounding communities can find pride and shared investment in the lasting development of resilient and healthy food systems. My support for this resolution comes from an unspeakable gratitude to the mentors and farmers who have come before and a deep conviction to see the same opportunities afforded to me, be a common practice systematically ingrained into our county and its service to its residents. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Still.
Lastly, we do have Maria Benavides. However, we do not see her on the Zoom call, and so that will conclude public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Baca. Thank you all, and, um, we will move on to Item Six, Approval of Minutes. Um, I move approval of the August 27th, 2024 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes. Item 6B, I move, um, to approve the September 10th, 2024 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes. And we move on to the Consent Agenda. And before we begin that, I just wanted to make a, a statement, personal privilege here, that, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, who spoke moments ago with an interpreter, and Ms. Rembert, um, are speaking to two properties that we have. The word from our, our Director, um, Nick Hamm, that he will work with those properties. Those, those properties are nuisance abatement properties that are on the consent agenda, but we have a, a commitment from our Planning Department that they will be working with those individuals. So we move on to Item Seven, Approval of Consent. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers?
Yes, ma'am. 7A1, FR 2024-105. 7C2 is FR 2024-106. F is ordinance 2024-19. H is AR 2024-107. I is AR 2024-108. J is AR 2024-109. K is AR 2024-110. L is 2024-111. M is AR 2024-112. And N2 is FR 2024-113. And N two is FR twenty-twenty-four dash one thirteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The, uh, consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, uh, discussion, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. Uh, are two of these being removed because, uh, planning is working with?
No, no, I do not, I did not propose, propose removal. Um, Director Hamm indicated that they can move forward, that he will work with the property owners as he does when, when property owners come forward.
Okay, thank you. So, um, we are approving the entry demolition of dilapidated structures and removal of all nuisances on the property, correct, for all these properties?
I think, uh, direct, yeah, I, I am not specifically aware of the na- the nature of, or the number of the property, the address rather, so here's, uh, okay, thank you, Director Hamm.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I ask Director Hamm a, this specific question? Just, um, I just want to make sure before I approve this, are there two properties that will, um, be not moving forward on the demolition, or are we still moving forward with demolition on all properties?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, uh, what the planning department is asking for tonight is authority to move forward, provided that's necessary. Uh, so the individual that came and spoke tonight, I'm familiar with her, she's working on those properties. The goal of the planning department is always to allow for the property owners to resolve these on their own. The authority that we're asking for tonight is to be able to move forward if that becomes a situation where they can't or will not be able to do that. Um, so, you know, the, Ms. Rembert, she has my personal contact information. We've been in touch since the nuisance abatement hearing, uh, provided they're able to either permit the structures to be safe and acquire building permits or to remove them on their own volition. The county would not need to take action there, but, uh, if, if they get into a position where they couldn't be able to do that, these structures were deemed unsafe, uh, by the nuisance abatement hearing officer. That was the recommendation of the staff that works in the nuisance abatement office in the building department. So, you know, as a general statement for nuisance abatement properties, this is a last resort for us, uh, but we always do, and it's even encouraged in the ordinance, to be able to encourage and work with the property owners so that they can resolve these issues on their own.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When was the original, uh, abatement meeting held for these two properties?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I'm sorry I was outside for a moment. Can you remind me which addresses we're asking about specifically?
They weren't, uh, that's my question too. Uh, addresses weren't given from those, uh, speakers.
Like, if I can add, the, the names of the individuals were Ms. Rembert that you mentioned, and it would be helpful if you could identify the address, and Mr. Gonzalez. I wasn't sure if those, he was one of those.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, thank you for that. So, uh, for Ms. Rembert, she is a relative of the property owner for the properties that are on Wallace. So there are three items there. It came forward as a single case. They happen to be three separately divided parcels, so they have three separate case numbers, they have three separate decisions, but it's, it's a family property. Ms. Rembert, with respect to her, she, she is not the property owner of record, so e- even if she had the resources and the wherewithal to come forward and do things on this, the county could not accept permits or grant permits to her unless the property owner of record granted those to her. So, we've conveyed that situation to her. She said that she's trying to resolve that as well. We're going to continue to try and work through that with her. But the, the structures themselves, they are unsafe, and it was made, the determination was made by the hearing officer that they should be removed.
And when was that?
Uh, the hearing for these was in, I want to say, July. Um, and the Wallace properties in particular, the county's been working on those since two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you, that helps even more. And the other, the other property, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, respectfully, if I could speak up for a moment. For the sake of the record, these items, could we remove them from the consent agenda simply so we can identify them and clarify they're being reserved or deferred so that further action can be taken by Director Hamm to work with the parties?
Madam Chair, if, if I might, so the department is not asking to defer these, just explaining that in the process, even if the board were to authorize these, these tonight, that doesn't mean that the county has to take action. It's that if the property owner comes forward in a reasonable amount of time and does something on their own, the county never has to take action themselves. But I would, I would still advocate for approval this evening so that we have that authority, provided that, if we do get into a situation where we need to move forward.
A- and, um, um, our assi- assistant, uh, uh, attorney, um, there has been a, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as written. Um, so, uh, are you saying that we would, we would have to amend that motion? Because that, it's, it's, uh, on the table for a vote.
If the, the consent agenda as written indicates the motion is to adopt the administrative resolution on, I believe it's three particular properties that, that are at issue, and this is why Commissioner Benson was raising, I believe, his concern that there was some effort to defer to work with one or two or three particular properties. I simply would like, for the sake of the record, those properties to be identified so we know which they are.
Are you requesting a defer? I mean, the, so we need to, another action, and then we also have?
Or, or simply to clarify those. The discussion began with Director Hamm speaking in detail about some properties. It's just unclear in the record which particular properties they are and which items on the agenda they are. I believe we have like six or seven or eight particular motions to amend, I mean, motions to adopt administrative resolutions relating to properties, and it's not clear which particular properties were being referenced when Director Hamm was speaking.
Okay, and what I'm hearing, Director Hamm, is out of H, I, and J on Wallace Street?
Madam Chair, uh, so the, the properties that we're speaking about, that Ms. Rembert spoke to, those would be items H, I, and J identified as forty-three oh seven, forty-three oh nine, and forty-three eleven, Wallace Street Southeast.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
And the second question was, the, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, is, is his concern on, on this agenda, on this consent agenda as well?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, that property, I believe, is in reference to, uh, item L. Uh, that property is on Pajarito Mesa. It is unaddressed because it does not have legal access. Uh, it's identified by UPC. It's one zero zero six, zero five one two, nine eight zero three, three four zero one, zero five. Uh, and that property, um, it's become a space where discarded pallets are being hoarded. Uh, and given the concerns around fire safety on the mesa, the county is asking for approval to be able to remove those and properly dispose of them.
Okay, so that clarifies the items, um, that we are discussing here that, uh, but there was another question that you had, and a reminder that there's a motion to approve this consent agenda, so we're going to need a, some assistance if you want to remove those.
I think what needs to happen is either we call the, the, um, the motion, the vote, or because we're having dialogue on consent items, that they need to be appropriately placed on the agenda to be formally presented. And so if you want to call the vote on what has been motioned as approval of consent, you could do so. Or, um, I think the opportunity may have passed to amend the agenda, but I'll defer to the chair.
Well, I don't, uh, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll ju- I'll just, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I think, uh, there probably isn't any more, uh, of, of a district that has been dealing with this for about eight years than, uh, the southwest, uh, and the South Valley. Um, and through my experience, Commissioner Benson, that, um, every time I had, like, stepped stood up and, and, and stood for, uh, the constituent, um, and we given them time, um, they didn't seem to, to do anything. Uh, they just kind of played the system. And when I stopped doing that and started listening to staff and say, because they've worked with everybody, so the reason why I said I'm going to go ahead and move forward with, with, with us approving this, it seemed that that was the catapult to really, uh, fix, um, a lot of the properties that we were going after, or really just going and cleaning it up, and, and we've, we've had a lot of success and improvement on that. It's a very hard decision to make, and I, and I, and I understand it. I've made it a lot of times in, 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 in my term, uh, in my tenure here, uh, but it just seemed for me that the best result is to, uh, move it forward, put the pressure, and give them, and, 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 and I'm telling you, staff has, has followed through with their word to giving them and working with them, to give them the opportunity to clean it up. Because like he did state, it costs us money to do that. We would rather they, uh, do that themselves, and, and I've been very successful after I kind of stopped it, because I kept prolonging it. I did that for a many, many, uh, projects, and Nick, Nick knows I did, and I, you know, I know, I'm, I'm, my job is to stand up for my constituents, but there comes a time where you have to get them to move it forward, and when you hear two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Commissioner, I think, I think we've done our due diligence. I just wanted to make that comment, that I've been more successful on what we're about to do now than I did the latter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Last of the discussion, because that's where we are. We're discussing this, so.
Yeah, yeah, this is a discussion on the, on the topic more than the specific properties. To Legal's point, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, yeah. Well, I just needed clarity, since this is consent, I needed clarity on, on the items, um, since property addresses weren't given. And even with the Wallace, there's three different properties. She said she only wants to save, try to save one, not the other two, so not sure what that is, but I'm, um, the, the decision-making of the, uh, planning department is fine with me. It's more just knowing what I'm consenting to than, uh, questioning, uh, the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Thank you for the discussion, and I apologize if I've sort of bent the rules there, but we do have a, a motion and a second. I do um, want to say that this is recommended by the, uh, planning department, and I call for a vote. And all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Hamm. And thanks for the clarification, Commissioners. Item eight, adoption of ordinance amendment to the county code. Madam Clerk, can you please issue an ordinance number for economic development?
Yes, ma'am. Eight A is ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty.
And Executive Development Officer Marcos Gonzalez on ordinance for Ebon Solar.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, um, the Economic Development Staff requests the approval to adopt the ordinance authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to issue industrial revenue bonds not to exceed nine hundred and forty-two million on behalf of Ebon Solar for the purpose of constructing and equipping their advanced manufacturing solar facility, adding nine hundred and eleven new jobs to the Mesotl Sol area. The IRB would provide certain tax exemptions to defray the cost of construction in this facility. It is the Economic Development Staff and the Economic Development Review Committee recommendation to adopt this IRB as outlined in their application. I'd like to also note that this is a, uh, state and city, um, combined project as well. And, um, I also have Beth Waltrip and Chris Chavez from the state and the city, they would like to provide some brief comments. And then also, um, Judy Kai, the new CEO of the company, is here as well to answer any questions that the Commission may have as well.
Thank you, Director. And I wanted to also, um, now state that we are convening a, a public hearing on this, and so I need to ask, are there any, uh, people signed up to speak other than what?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, there are no speakers signed up for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Please continue. There are no?
No, nobody has signed up, no. I'll defer to the chair.
Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Gonzalez.
That's the end of my short presentation, so, unless I have any questions, but I'd like to give the opportunity for the state and the city to provide some brief comments to the Commission as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the state of New Mexico, um, we are grateful to be in front of you for this, and, um, we have our, Ebon has our full support in this, um, matter. We've committed ten million dollars in LITA funds to this project. We, um, are very appreciative of the nine hundred-plus jobs that they're bringing and the economic impact it will create to the state of New Mexico, to the city, and to the county as well. Thank you.
Hello, um, Commissioners. My name is Chris Chavez. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of Albuquerque. Um, I just wanted to come here and speak in support of this project. Um, the city of Albuquerque is serving as the fiscal agent for the state's funds, and we've also put in, uh, one million in LITA funds as well, so, uh, we urge your, uh, support and thank you.
Madam Chair, and Judy Kai would like to just offer some brief words.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for your consideration of Ebon Solar's IRB application in support of the company's nine hundred forty-two million dollar investment in building a solar cell manufacturing plant in Macedosso. Uh, my name is Judy Kai. I'm the CEO of Ebon Solar. I've spent more than two decades building companies, big and small, and I'm very thrilled to be here today, uh, building the best solar cell manufacturing operations in the U.S., right here in Bernalillo County. Once completed, we anticipate the project will create more than nine hundred direct jobs and offer opportunities for diverse range of workers from entry-level positions to the specialized roles. I'm here today with my team, Bill Clont, our Vice President of Project Operation, as well as Justin Hawes, our attorney from, um, Rhodey Law Firm. Let me tell a little bit more about Ebon Solar and our commitment to this community. Our legacy in advanced chip technology and the strong financial position allows us to invest in Macedosso with confidence. Ebon's vision is to advance solar cell technologies, increase the solar cell production, and boost efficiency of traditional solar cells. Solar cells we plan to manufacture here will primarily supply U.S. solar companies who are looking for high-quality and higher-efficiency solar cells. So as part of the site selection process, we went through a great deal of due diligence, looking at over twenty sites across the country. In the end, we chose to make significant investment here at Macedosso. We chose correctly, as New Mexico continues to be incredibly welcoming business environment, making us confident in our decision to come here. We value our wonderful partnerships with the county, city, and state, as well as our universities, workforce, and economic development organizations. We're aiming to break ground in Q one, twenty-twenty-five, and be operational twelve months after. So, strong community support will be important to bring the potential project online. In fact, it is key to our strategy. We are committed to hire, hiring locally for the construction of our facility and also hiring for permanent positions. Uh, we have, uh, established our corporate headquarters here in Macedosso this month, and we already have conducted, uh, several interviews. So we do look forward to working with all of you, uh, to move this project forward. And my team and I here are very happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, really, I don't have a whole lot of questions. I'm just thrilled that we have the opportunity to work with you. Thank you for coming to Bernalillo County. And I love hearing that you have found us to be, uh, business-friendly. Uh, that's our goal. Uh, and I just want to kind of highlight some of the points here, is that, um, we don't have a whole lot of international businesses here that provide jobs, that provide economic growth. And by economic growth, that's not just jobs here in the community. That's, that's a, businesses operating that, that bring dollars from outside of New Mexico and outside of even the United States into our state. That's true economic development. Creating jobs, and not just jobs at your plant, but supporting network jobs with new lawyers that need to be hired, new CPAs and new, need to be hired, new school teachers that need to be hired to, um, teach the children that are now being, uh, raised here in the community. And I know the IRB is for thirty years, but that's a, that's a small scale.
And I know the IRB is for 30 years, but that's a, that's a small scale in the eyes of a business. In the eyes of an individual, 30 years seems forever for me to pay off a mortgage. But in the eyes of a business, I mean, you've got multiple generations that can be working at a company. So I'm very excited here. And, and actually, Marcos, I do want, I don't have the question, but I know often we do get the question of why are we giving money to companies? And I just want to clarify, we're, we're not giving money. There, what we're doing is actually increasing tax revenue for our county that, that didn't exist before. I think there's a misunderstanding with what an IRB is, industrial revenue bond. And Marcos, so I'd like to ask you to make a comment on how the, how the county generates those funds and maybe what the funds were before the business came in.
Sure. And Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so correct an IRB is not, it's exempting, currently it would be exempting taxes that don't exist because clearly nothing's there on the site. So currently we collect a certain property tax amount that's there at the site, but pending the construction development of the site, obviously property taxes would increase and there would be property taxes associated with the new equipment and then the gross to see taxes as well with the purchase of that equipment and certain construction supplies. So it's on the exemption of the future tax liability that would be there and then in return the company's paying a payment in lieu of taxes. And so where the county's net benefit is, is not just from the pilot piece, but also what you're talking about, all that private investment that's going into the county and paying on taxes, on certain taxes that are not exempt as part of the IRB as well. And then also all the other cluster impacts from having new restaurants pop up or different services that are servicing the industry. And we're not even talking about the suppliers that are probably going to end up moving here as well to support this large manufacturing firm as well that we're not going to be doing having requested an IRB on. So it's all those industries as well.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. An example off the top of my head, Rose's paper, local business employees, hundreds of employees providing paper products from toilet paper all the way up, paper cups. They're going to have another large client here. So that's great news. Also, I want to thank the unions also for, for working with the Commission on softening the language. I know, you know, everybody would like everything they want, but we also don't want to create an environment, we don't want to do a touchdown dance before we've gotten the ball across the end zone. And if, it, it would be very easily possible for union jobs to be the most important thing that then scares businesses away from New Mexico. So I think that was seen tonight and in the support that the union showed. And we need more union jobs. We need to get the union members employed, but we got to get the employers here first. So I just want to make that comment as well.
Commissioner Borbo and Commissioner Casada.
Thank you for bringing this. We're excited. You know, this is the best place to be doing solar work and glad you found us, glad you're wanting to bring your investments and folks here. I'm really thankful for the comments tonight too and for you all looking at the language for appraisal, apprenticeships, right? I've asked every time, so this isn't directly to Ebon Solar, but every time somebody comes to the IRB, I've asked, how are we making sure with all confidence that our local residents are benefiting from those jobs, getting the training? I love the comment that I think a young person, that someone read of a young person that, you know, said, how can we also make sure? We have a big problem with how do we, you know, service reentry and, and some of that is what's hoped for by IRB too, right? Is the ways that folks can give back to the community. If we're, I know our area person mentioned that, you know, a billion-dollar investment. I assume that that, when somebody has that about to invest, I assume they're also smart enough to say, hey, we, we're going to be here a long time. Let's make this community a better place. So I'm just thankful for the flexibility to work with us, for prioritizing local jobs and for making those commitments. So I just wanted to mention that and yeah, say that when we can get in earlier and to Commissioner Benson's point, right, we can't, we can do both, right? We can include the folks that, the unions and the folks in the planning so that we're getting across the finish line together and we're not trying to repair later. But that is no comment to Ebon Solar and we're grateful for your work here to bring good clean jobs to.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. You know, taxes is something that, you know, we, we're concerned here at Burnaleo County because that's how we operate, right? So we, that's how we get things done. But I don't think we've really talked about, you know, the wages and them spending the money. You know, they still have to pay taxes on their wages. They still go out and put that money in the community which supports this community. I mean, 911 jobs, that's nothing to Texas. That's nothing to Colorado. That's nothing to Arizona, but it's everything to New Mexico. I want to tell you a story about manufacturing jobs. When my brother came home from the Navy, we grew up very poor, and my brother came home from the Navy and he got a job with General Electric when they were here. Now, they weren't the best stewards of our land and our stuff, so we've put in these regulations to make sure that doesn't happen to us again. But the story continued from the pay that he was be able to, to, to bring into his family and along with his wife and him, he was able to send his kids to St. Pius and get a better education. So both those children now, from a family from poverty and now have children with master's degrees that are making over $200,000 a year, been building $10 million homes and, and, and very successful because we were able to break the cycle of poverty by having these opportunities for my community. When I knocked on doors, when I first ran for office, the number one ask for me as a county commissioner is please support jobs. My kids need jobs. I need jobs. So my goal has been through, through, through my tenure here is to figure out and work with whoever would want to come here to provide jobs and opportunities for my community. That's how we break the cycle of poverty here in New Mexico and that's how we move forward. I wanted to tell you that story because it's important because it's truth and it's fact and it's, it's viable. General Electric is no longer here, but the results of what they did for this community will move forward forever. Number two, why aren't we ever number one in solar? Solar was invented at Sandia National Laboratories. Why would we at not one point when that had happened many, many years ago, why weren't we the innovators? Why didn't we take that one thing that we did right here in New Mexico and make it a staple of who we are and where we come from? That ship has sailed, but a boat has come back. Right? So a boat's coming back. Now we can prove that we could be the place for solar, solar manufacturing. I would love to see those panels on all Burnaleo County buildings. I would like to see how, how we could change the future and how Burnaleo County could be a part of the change for the future. And I'm going to say this. I did a project on the West Side and because of COVID and us scraping, trying to get money to do this project, I advocated that we just get the project done because I feared that if I didn't get the project done, it would never happen. And the community I represent, we have been working 30 years for this project. And everybody knows it's the Route 66 Visitor Center. And I look back at me making a decision saying, look, we don't want to, we don't want to have to use union because we use union. And I'm a union guy and I, and, and I had to do this because my job was to get this project done. Well, that building is sitting there, so this is for all of you from Ebon Solar. We did it not, non-union. It's not open. We turned it over to the city. The city went in and we found major amounts of problems in the construction. So now the city has to go back and fix a brand-new building that's sitting there because we didn't use union workers and we're finding that the elevators aren't working, that there's leaks that, you know, and so I'm going to advocate for unions right now. I made that mistake. I will not make that mistake again because you want the best, high-quality, well-trained workers to build your buildings because if you don't, you might find yourself where I'm at right now, unable to open a building that cannot pass code. So union jobs are important. What unions do and bring to communities are super important and I won't make that mistake again. I will always make sure that we do things right. That's just a message to you. I think you did great here. I think you're fair. I think that you understand that you're coming to us. You picked us and I want to thank you for picking us. You could have went anywhere. You could have went to the states I talked about earlier and probably had a better ride, but you believe in us. And, and I'm here to tell you tonight that we have the workforce for you. We're waiting for you. We're eager to go work for you and we'll do the best for you because you came to a place that won't let you down because we know this is an opportunity that we will take and we will run with it and we will better our families and we'll better our future. So I hope we get support today or tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Levas.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair and. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of the representatives here from the company. Thanks for being here in person and to all the teams that have worked on this project. I, I agree with my colleagues. This is a really exciting project and with the community members that have, have come forth and spoke from both the, the development community and from the, you know, from unions and workers advocacy groups, it's clear that everybody sees the incredible benefit of this facility and this company locating here in Mesa del Sol. And, you know, I just want to commend you on the quality of the jobs that are in this. You know, I, I've raised some questions about some other projects, we'll say, that really have some very low-wage jobs and this is not one of them, right? This is, these are really some high-quality jobs. People can support their families on even the entry-level wages that are, that are stated in, in the schedule that we've been provided. So, you know, that makes this something that's, in my opinion, very easy to support, right? This is, you know, these are, this is a real return on investment. But I do want to be clear, I, I want to correct the record and ride the middle ground here a little bit, that, that this is an investment on the part of the county. We, we are investing in Ebon and Ebon is investing in us, right? This is a mutual partnership. This is, and it's important to recognize that. And we are deferring taxes on future potential, we are deferring future potential taxes, right? We are deferring for future generations over, over 30 years, the property tax and, and some of the equipment taxes for that facility in exchange for the stated benefits that are, that are in the lease agreement and the other terms that are, that are laid out before us. So we are using county money. It's just, we're not writing a check for it. We're just not accepting the money. Now, we all know, of course, that within that, there's the but-for clause, right? But for this inducement, this project would be highly unlikely to move forward in our community. And so that's, you know, that's the trade-off. Without this incentive, without that deferral, the cost to the company and the project developer would not pencil out. And so, you know, just, I want to make sure that that's understood here, that, you know, this is, there's a little bit of a middle ground. It's, it's very nuanced. It's taken me quite a while to even get to a basic level of understanding on that. But bottom line is I think this is an excellent deal. I think this is a good thing for our county, a good thing for our community. And the, the one statement that I want to make that, that really I think incorporates what some of the advocates have, have said here tonight, but I think all of us Commissioners also received a letter from a group of, you know, construction tradespeople and workers' advocates that stated some positions. And, you know, as a businessperson myself, I think it was a little late in the game for, for that kind of ask. But where I'm a little frustrated, and this has nothing to do with Ebon, so, you know, close your ears because it really doesn't involve Ebon. It involves our process internally at the county. We have always been told that the inducement resolution, so the one that we acted on, you know, a little over a month ago, was just the beginning of the conversation and there was still time to, to have conversations and negotiate and, you know, we often ask questions at that point, as my colleague raised, you know, we talked about water, something on many of these deals, we asked about water use. I think asking responsible questions for, for our community. What, what is our community getting out of this? What are we giving? And we've always been told, we can ask those questions, we can add things, we can subtract, you know, this is still in flux. And what I learned on this, and again, to no fault of the development team or anyone like that, is that that is not really the case, that once we induce an IRB, we ought to be prepared to pretty much support it in that form. Because asking a developer to change their project, to change the terms of their agreement on the last mile of the, of the trip is unfair to the developer and I think it's unfair to all of us and to our community to sort of lay that out there that, oh yeah, we can still change this. I mean, we can in theory, but in reality, I think those conversations, if they're going to be had, need to happen much earlier in the process. Again, that speaks to our process, our internal workings, our internal policies to make sure that we bring in those stakeholders at the front end, to make sure that those priorities are stated at the front end before, before anything's in writing, before anyone's invested time and money and capital into these projects, we need to make sure that those priorities are stated. And frankly, that's a failing of this Commission, right? That's not any of, anyone out there. This Commission is responsible for those, for stating those things. And so, you know, if we have community that's asking us to, to look at how we're treating, for example, apprenticeship labor, then that's a call to us, not a call to, to do it project by project. That's just not going to be a responsible way to do business and it's not fair to, to the development community. So very long-winded diatribe there, but I just think it's really important to say that, that I hear what our community members are saying, I hear what labor is saying, and we need to work on that as a Commission. At the same time, we have something to celebrate tonight and, you know, I'm really proud and excited to move this forward and thank you to, to the whole team that made this happen.
Madam Chair.
And Madam Chair and Vice Chair Levas, just to let you know, I've had, we've had, the departments had a dialogue with Madam Chair about wanting to have a open worktable meeting with the entire Commission to talk about our policies and how, how that works. And we've asked our folks at Area to look at best practices from around the country and how these items are treated as well with apprenticeship pieces and other pieces. So we are looking at that information to be able to provide a, a working scope for the Commission to look at, consider when we look at our policies and procedures as how, and how those items work.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to actually bring attention to Area and Ms. Danielle Casey who's here tonight. And thank you for your role and your team's role in bringing opportunities like this. And for the folks out there, Area stands for the Albuquerque Regional Economic Alliance. And when Ms. Casey took the new executive director role, she worked with the board to change the name and that's exactly what it is. Hence the, the state being here, hence the city being here. It's not just, and Burnaleo County being at the table, it's not just Burnaleo County's project, it's not just the City of Albuquerque's project, it's the state's project and it's going to, it's going to ripple through the entire state. And so economic development is so fiercely competitive. To attract businesses to our state is so competitive, which is why you don't look around and see a whole lot because there's more states that take it upon themselves to be more competitive in that process. And we're now stepping it up. The current administration, the city, the county, we're working together and, and also Sandoval, they're part of that, Edgewood, Los Lunas Belen, they're part of that alliance. And it's, it takes a team effort to be competitive on a national level because this is, this is national level competition to bring jobs to our people. So, yeah, I just want to say I'm excited for this and this is a win for you, but also for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I, just my final statement here and thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you, Ebon Solar. I mean, I think you're hearing that there is a lot of support for your project. We thank you for coming to New Mexico, to Burnaleo County. And I also wanted to add that what, what we're talking about here is, is really unique. We have the development community that supports this project and this economic development. We heard, we've heard some, from some, some trade groups, from labor, from community activists who said, thank you for putting language into this, this document that expresses your direct support for creating a that expresses your direct support for creating a climate-related workforce." I'm going to say, I think that was used by our governor just this week in, in making sure that we move forward in this. Commissioner Casada mentioned something to that effect too about our opportunities here. But this, the apprenticeship programs and the workforce that we're trying to develop, we stand ready in Burnley County. CNM stands ready, UNM, to help you to succeed by creating this workforce, by, by helping our trades, by helping our apprenticeship programs for creating that workforce. And it is included as a, as a desire and a commitment. And, and we stand by, by you in the, in the agreement for this IRB. But we stand committed to, to working with you for that because that benefits our entire community. So this tax deferment and these incentives are very important to companies. And what we're looking at too is what are the community benefits? That is one. Creating these good jobs, helping you to be successful. So unless there are no further comments, Commissioner, did you want to move approval?
I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. We won't let you down.
Thank you. Item nine, adoption of resolution Parks Recreation and Open Space Cultivating Burnley County. And Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
AR 2024-114.
Ms. Mari Simbana.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I am trying to figure out the overhead projector. My name is Mari Simbana, Open Space Sector Manager in the Parks Recreation and Open Space Department. I am before you today to ask for your approval of the cultivating Burnley County resolution. And I do have some handouts, if I can do that. Under cultivating Burnley County, we will continue playing a defining role in our county's food system through developing and supporting agricultural land stewardship, rural and urban agricultural activities and projects, and the local food economy. Thank you, John. Parks Recreation and Open Space staff put together a strategy for cultivating Burnley County around 2013 after many years of working in farmland preservation, striving towards public wellness and contemplating how to grow produce on our agricultural properties. Many of, of the objectives in that document have been achieved and in fact are currently funded programs. Not all of them, but most of them. This strategy language was also included in the 2015 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan and has served as a guide for our agricultural programming and land stewardship. We have acquired significant agricultural properties, instituted a beginner farmer training program, provided public programming on gardening, engaged youth in agricultural learning, committed to a secia education, partnered with county extension as well as the Sudat Soil and Water Conservation District to enhance education for the public, and collaborated, collaborated and contracted with organizations working directly with the community. I want to thank John Garish for his earlier presentation describing some of our programs. I also want to thank the individuals who made public comment. They have shared their experiences in a way that illustrates and highlights the need for this resolution. And also, I don't need to give you all the different reasons why this resolution should be supported. But I do say, do want to share that beyond our department, the establishment of the South Valley Economic Development Center has been a great resource to small businesses. Environmental health staff regularly provide instructions on food regulations and permitting processes, while natural resources staff plans, implements, and monitors sustainable water use. And the plans and ordinances managed by Planning and Development Services staff keep our community's unique agricultural character intact. This cultivating Burnley County policy framework will encompass the county's stewardship of agricultural land and resources, public programming in local food, agricultural, and a secias, stimulate farm and food businesses to boost our economy, exemplify responsible use of water resources, promote urban agriculture, and create and improve green spaces for community wellness. All the many things that staff and public today have brought up. I want to emphasize that cultivating Burnley, Burnley County is not just about lifting up businesses or only resourcing underserved areas. It's about growing the capacity of individual abilities that already exist. You've heard today from many talented, smart, capable, willing members of our community. And we do this to be able to contribute to a more healthy and prosperous, prosperous community together. So building capacity of individuals to build our community together. In closing, having a resolution in place helps to solidify our position as an anchor in our food system and local agriculture through our properties, programs, and policies. I ask that you carry us forward with the strength of our agricultural and food heritage, which are not only on the ground, but in our communal identity. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Simbana. Any questions? I just, yes, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I, I love this resolution. I think this is very forward-thinking and in line with so many of the actions that this commission, through the, you know, partnership advice and consent with our wonderful staff at the planning, I'm sorry, at the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Division, have helped us with, right? Acquiring new lands, improving existing. I think that, that we're well on our way and we already are, in fact, a leader in this space. And, you know, it, I guess it's, I'll leave it up to the commission here. But I wanted to make what I think is a friendly amendment here to this. I, I put it before everybody. I just handed one to, to John. And I know Mari didn't have a lot of time to, to read it. But on, and I think this goes in number four on the, now therefore be it resolved. This talks about securing water rights for the purpose of facilitating this year-round food production and, and agricultural crops. And I just think it's really important, even though I, I don't necessarily see this as a, as a binding, you know, a hard, hard sell on anything, but I really think that it's important that our efforts maximize water use efficiency and availability for everyone, right? Because our water saved is another farmer that's able to, to get another round of irrigation. It's, you know, the Water Utility Authority. It's, there's so many parties that are, that are involved in this. And one of the best ways to do that, right, is through what we know, what I know, that I learned actually in Grow the Growers because I participated in that program. I was a graduate. And someday I will be a successful graduate. I will be one that, that you're saying, "Look at far, the farmer here." But not yet. But that this crop production emphasized, right, healthy soil principles. We heard some of our speakers tonight talk about that. We know that that is the way of the future. That is how we're going to build the biodiversity and the resiliency to confront the, the moonscape that we are now, you know, confronting with climate change and erodification in our region. So I just think this amendment that's before us, like I said, I consider it a friendly amendment because I think it just really states the importance of making sure that, you know, we are following those best practices, which I, I know we, pretty sure we already are. But just stating that and, and really saying that, you know, this is about making sure that we support that sort of, that, that circular system of, of regeneration. And so I can read the, the amendment. So I'll, I'll read it and then, so this is on number four at the end of what's already stated. "To maximize water use efficiency and availability for other users, crop production shall emphasize healthy soil principles such as minimizing disturbance, maximizing soil cover, and maximizing biodiversity such as growing forage for wild animals, direct grazing of domestic animals, and/or cover crops for soil health." So moved.
I'll second the amendment. Commissioner Casada.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, I, I a hundred percent agree with this. Using water to their maximum efficiency. I've asked for that before. And they labeled me as anti-agriculture and they had picket signs and pitchforks. So they were mad at me. I think Commissioner Benson remembers, remembers that when he first joined. Because I just felt that we're all responsible for water. And so they feel that the historic way of how they grow shouldn't be impeded on. But I a hundred percent agree that we all have to move in the future and conserve our water the best we can. And I think you kind of put it in that to, you know, in, in their best availability and how they do it. But I think that's a good precedence to start in looking at some of these other growers that were in the South Valley that were using like 10% of the, of the water, that other ones were using, growing twice the amount of crops. And I think that should be the future of agriculture. So I a hundred percent approve this. I just wanted to let you know what my experience was when I asked them to be more efficient. But I a hundred percent agree. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the, the support. And just to be very clear, you know, so that it's out there, and I think we're all clear. This is about county lands, right? This is only applying to our open space lands and, and any land that the county owns for agricultural production. We're not trying to impede on what private producers are doing and nonprofits, you know, anybody in that space. But I do think as, as a leader in the community, as leaders in the community, you know, we have a, an opportunity here to demonstrate new and exciting practices. And, and a lot of these are not new. I want to be very clear. Healthy soil principles, you know, forage for animals and direct grazing and cover crops. That's actually like the OG of crop production, right? That's how, that's how we started as a, as a human society in agriculture was not with, you know, large corporate commercial farms and, you know, a feedlot here and, you know, another center here and, and, you know, trucking things around. That is not how we did agriculture for, you know, the last 10,000 years. That happened in the last 100 years. And so, you know, this is really saying, let's, let's look at the basics because it got us this far. And there's, there's still a lot to learn there. But private producers, you know, do, do as you, as you will. But I think as a county, we, we can and we will, and we already are leading on this, so.
Commissioner Barbal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. I agree. I, I think we are doing this already. I know I've learned from Santiago Mayestas, who does a lot of the work at Hubble House. I learned myself that the three sisters and how we use that, how that makes efficient, efficient, efficient use of water and soil and regenerates itself. So, but I do think it's great to, if we're going to put past a resolution, let's get it in there. So it lives beyond all of us and all the folks that we know are diligently working to make sure we're protecting and cultivating future growers for agriculture, mostly agricultural state, right? So thank you so much for this. Thanks for the resolution. And thanks for the, for the resolution and the amendment. Oh, I guess, sorry. I just want to say, because I was contacted by some community leaders, Carlos Flores and others who are like definitely saying, "This is not new." And I just want to give all the accolades to the urban agriculture that's happened in my district, the Mesa Verde Farming Market. And so much has happened in our urban agriculture thanks to the counties being able to see ahead and really work on that. It's what everyone, talking about door knocking, that's what everybody in my district wants. I'm like, "Really? Do you know what the work is?" But thankfully, you all are helping make it happen. And our, our communities, even in our urban areas, are having access to food and gardening and that way of life. So thank you.
So there's an amendment that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amendment?
Sorry, one last thing. I just wanted to ask the staff about the amendment. Our, I realize you haven't had a ton of time to, to look at it, but are you okay with this?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Olivas, yes, I think what was missing is maybe more language in there about soil. So I appreciate that. There are mention of number 20 and 21 in here. I believe those are, those are maybe cut and paste edits that need to be removed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
You're right.
But we would like to add agricultural open spaces at some point.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So the motion is for the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thanks. Then we move back to the resolution. And I would just like to say a couple of words on that. I wanted to thank you, Mari, and John for bringing this forward to me. And I wholeheartedly, you know, agree with this and have, have sponsored this because this is to me what Burnley County is about. I mean, I always talk about, you know, Albuquerque and Burnley County are here are for, for generations because of our river and because of our a secia system. We have thrived and we have built out, but we still have successfully been able to protect that rural way of life in the valley. Those, the, the a secia system, I, people who move here from out of state talk about it as, as the thing that brought them here. And in one case, somebody told me. And if, if, if that ever changed, they'd leave. But I mean, it is, it is something to celebrate. It is something to foster. And what we're doing with this resolution also is teaching the next generation and building that next generation of stewards of the land, farmers, and just those of us who, who willingly pay our MRGCD taxes so that we can continue that ribbon of green and that a secia system. So to me, this is about that. It also is about the, the larger philosophy of Burnley County. So this is a policy document, as far as I'm concerned, that really does lead by example from our small acreage, really, of Burnley County-owned agricultural space and showing by example what we can do and what we need to do to retain that very important component of, of who we are as a culture in Burnley County. So thank you for doing this. And then lastly, the part about the food insecurity. I was just blown away that the figures, the state population of, of our state, entire state of New Mexico, 321,370 people is food, has food insecurity of some kind. That's 15% of our population. And if we can, you know, promote these growers market, promote the natural foods that many people came here and talked about today, we are building a healthier community. We are helping farmers, but we are also helping those of us who, who live here. And I, I just, bravo. I, I a hundred percent am behind this, this policy document. And I will swear that I will use this as we move forward to figure out how we can leverage more money for these kinds of educational programs, these kinds of protection of our open space and our agricultural lands. So, and our farmers and our healthy and good, good use of water. Because efficiency is important, but we've been doing it for generations and we, we need to continue that. So I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any more comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Simbana, thank you, Mr. Barney. And last on our approvals, procurement and business services, Ms. Sidio White.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam, Madam Chair. This particular item is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Burnley County and the City of Albuquerque to address the joint use and operations of the medical and mental health triage facility, the prisoner transport unit, and the resource reentry center located at 401 Roma, and to authorize the county manager to execute any future amendments related to the original intergovernmental agreement. In 2018, pursuant to the McLendon litigation requirements, the city and the county entered into an agreement to collaborate and allocate resources to build out the medical triage facility and the prisoner transport in addition to the resource reentry center as, as stated at 401 Roma. This particular agenda item, as far as the services, the medical and mental health triage is where arrestees are, undergo a health assessment by the county's medical contractor, which is now UNMH. And if the arrestee passes, And if the arrestee passes the medical screening, then Albuquerque Police Department, through the prisoner transport, they transport the arrestee up to MDC. So that saves the officer, arresting officer, time not having to drive all the way up to MDC. So what the City of Albuquerque contributes towards this collaboration is the actual prisoner transport, which is Albuquerque Police Department officers. And we, the county, this collaboration, we also contribute the services at the resource reentry center. The resource reentry center, as we know, is operated by the Department, Burnaleo County's Behavioral Health Division, which offers resources to arrestees, or not arrestees, but inmates, when they leave MDC. And then lastly, the City of Albuquerque provides $150,000 annually in temporary lodging vouchers to be used by those individuals that are released from the facility. So this particular agreement is for an additional five years, with an option to renew for an additional five years. I have representatives here from our medical contractor, UNMH, here to answer any questions, and also Sarah Spain from the Resource Reentry Center and Albuquerque Police Department. First, now couldn't be here today, but they are very much in favor of continuing the joint allocation and resources towards this, these services.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sidio White? Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Lisa, and folks, for bringing this. I definitely support the renewal of this. I've learned that in that transport alone, how costly it is because of the transport, obviously, the time of APD, when we often have to bring someone back. So that is definitely a bonus, and I think continuing this is an important part of how we save money and be more effective. I do, I was told at one point when I met with the courts that there is also an effort to try and do something in effect towards the release on the, like if somebody is going to be released on their recognizance or that program, that they were trying to initiate that downtown, too. Is that part of this, or maybe I'm fully off on?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, there were, I think it's part of this. And I apologize that APD isn't here, but I know it is part of this program as far as the prisoner transport.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's the only question. Otherwise, I fully support. I think it's a good, effective way to cut down on costs, so thank you.
Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, you know, I know this is not a new contract. It's been around for like five years or maybe before that. But I just think it's a really, a great example of the partnerships that we have with the city, the county, our medical contractor, right? Speaks volumes to our team, putting these agreements together. And I think in a really creative way, like what I like most about this is the $150,000 is not a payment of cash, but it's vouchers. It's something that really makes a difference in our community and helps with that reentry process. So, you know, I just think that's, I really like the creativity there. And of course, I fully support this, and, you know, the ride-alongs I've been on, I had the opportunity at one point to go to the RRC, or not to the RRC, the PTC, and just see what a great resource that is for our officers to not have to drive all the way out to the Far West Mesa and keep our officers on the streets. So, great work.
Thank you. Any other comments? Move approval?
Move for approval?
I'll second that. Move by Commissioner Barbo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes. Thank you, Ms. Sidio White. Okay, announcement of the next commission meeting will be October 8th at the zoning meeting at 3:00 PM in these commission chambers, and Tuesday, October 8th, also the administrative meeting at 5:00 PM in these commission chambers. And with nothing further, this is adjourned. Thank you.